Hello, podcast listeners. We know podcasts are a great way to catch up on a program that you may have missed on KSJE and it's provided as a free service of this radio station. But you know, KSJE is now listener-supported, and so while you enjoy this podcast, we hope that you'll also take some time to join KSJE. Become a member today. It's quite easy to do. Just go to our website at ksj.com/support and pick the level of support that best matches your budget. Thanks again for listening. Here's your podcast. Joining me here in our visual radio studio to talk a little bit about her race for Farmington School Board in District Four, which is the light green area on the map that we are showing for Farmington School Districts in the county. Andrea Termon is here to talk about her run for the school board. Good morning and thanks for coming in.
Good morning. Thank you for having me.
Let's start by having you tell us a little bit maybe about your background and why you decided to run for school board.
Okay. Again, my name is Andrea Termon. I am an educator myself, so I teach at Casa Montessori preschool. I've been there for 17 years. So I have a bachelor's in Family Consumer Science from New Mexico State. So obviously, I'm in the classroom all the time as well. So school board means a lot to me, any type of school and education. And also, I manage the school over there as well. So I have business experience. I've managed there for 16 years. And so managing a school, I know a lot about, you know, admin, the education part, the teaching part, and all the students, of course.
You wear a lot of hats, is what it sounds like over there, right?
Yeah, definitely. But I love it. It's my passion, I guess.
But you're not a politician?
Not a politician at all. So this part is very, very hard for me. I'm just an educator and a parent, I guess, if you will.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so with Farmington Schools, what are some things you'd like to see or bring to the school board representing District Four?
District Four, yes. So, well, my goal, I guess, or I started my passion to become into this on the school board, started way back. I've been on the PTA for four years as a board member. And I just, I have three children in the schools. And so I think I see firsthand a lot what goes on at the schools. I'm there every day. My husband also is a teacher at PV. So I hear all of his thoughts and concerns and things like that. And so my first main concern, obviously, is safety. As a parent, I think that's the main concern of most people.
Sure.
So my first focus is our SRO officers were sharing a lot, like our, my country club school shares between one and four. Like, so one officer between four schools. And it's required that we're supposed to have one at every school, and we're not right now. So that's one of my main things. Safety should be the number one priority, especially with Aztec being so close to home and everything that happened there. I think as a parent, as a teacher, as an educator, like, we should be setting them up to feel comfortable where they're at as well. They already have a hard enough job. So, safety, definitely. So, SRO officers, portables. I am not a fan, not a fan at all. There's eight right now at Country Club. I know Mesa Verde has some. I know Ladera has some. I'm sure there's a lot of other schools that have portables. They're not safe at all. They don't have bathrooms in them. The student has to go by themselves with a key card and walk to the building, you know, by themselves, unattended. I feel bad for the student. I feel bad for the teachers. Like, as an educator, I would not, I'm in charge of all these students, and if I can't watch this child go to the bathroom, I don't know. I think we're setting ourselves up for something. And as a parent, I want to prevent that before something happens. I feel like a lot of, a lot of times, we wait until something bad happens, and then we change. I want to change it now.
Now, for folks who aren't familiar, these are the basically portable classrooms that look almost like mobile home or manufactured home on the campus of a school that is adjacent to the building, but it's lacking some of those things that you mentioned, like restrooms, and there's just one entrance, one way in, one way out, in my understanding, and that's what you're talking about.
I'm talking about that. I'm talking about there's no one to escort them. They're walking by themselves. What if, you know, somebody just came up along? What if that child decided to wander off, you know? And then, of course, the poor teachers, I feel bad for them. Like, that's, you know, that's kind of their responsibility. But how can they be responsible when, you know, this is the situation? So I feel like our, we need to allocate more funding towards the schools. Put it back into the classroom. Put the focus back in the students in the classrooms. Get rid of those portables. We need, all of our schools were built a long time ago. We need to update them and accommodate them for a good learning environment for the children and our size of our population. So, we've grown a lot. So, and also, we have, you know, construction workers working out there right now. Like, again, the children are not being supervised as they're walking. What about lockdowns? What happens when a child is walking between the buildings and a lockdown occurs? The little things that I think as a parent, we need to be brought up. So, that's my main concerns, first of all.
Got you. Right. And as you go around the district and talking to potential voters, what are they telling you? Are they telling you the same things or different things?
No, definitely. I don't think anybody's a fan of a portable. I have never heard that anybody is like, put my child in a portable. So, yeah, I want to go in a portable without a bathroom. So, yes, definitely, I think a lot of that, a lot of the SRO officers, for sure. And grading system. Parents don't understand it. The children don't understand it. I don't know if you're aware of, like, our one, two, three, four system.
Right.
I don't know if that's, like, the school board has control of that, but I just think that all around, we need to have a better communication on how to use it, what it is. Because how can children strive to do better with their grades if they don't understand how they're graded? So, that's my fill on it.
Sure.
And parents, how can we push our child to get better grades when we don't understand it as much? So.
Right.
Yes.
So that could be an educational component from the board. So maybe explain to the entire district what's going on with grades.
Yes. Or go back to our A, B, C, D. So, you know, because that's what's used in high school. That's what's used in college. Things like that. Just want to set our children up for the highest they can on achievement. More teacher incentives, I believe. I know teachers will never get paid what they should. It's a very important job. And I want somehow to give them more teacher incentives.
And what is that, what do you mean by that? More money or more other benefits?
I would love to give more money. I just don't know. You know what I mean?
That's a budget thing.
That's a budget thing. I understand that. But then, maybe more teacher incentives, not based on test scores.
Okay.
You know, something else. I'm not sure how we can do that, but they need to be recognized more. They're our voice. They're the ones who represent us, you know, in all of our education. So, it's really not the school board. It's the teachers, I feel like. It's the admin. It's the students.
Right.
So, I have met with many teachers along this journey of politician stuff. And so, I feel like that is what they, they want to be heard. They want their opinions. When you look up the definition of school board, it's a public. It's made up of the community. And so, to me, I want to get the community more involved. And I think that's what I've hopefully gained already. I'm hopefully getting more than 440 voters out there. That's how many voted altogether in District Four.
Last time.
For the last election.
Okay.
I'm hoping to, like, push that, push that, push that. Get more parents, get more teachers voting. School board's a big, a big deal.
Sure. And there's a lot of folks who may be listening to us and watching us this morning, who may say, well, I don't have any kids in school, so why should I worry about who's representing my district on the school board?
Yeah. And that's a wonderful question. So, to me, I've looked up so many things on it. And the Education Policy and Practice Department stated that, you know, again, it's a community involvement. Education correlates with higher academics performance and school improvement. When schools, parents, families, and communities work together to support the learning, students tend to earn higher grades and attend school longer. And that helps our neighborhoods. It helps our economy. It helps everything. Makes doctors want to come in. When we have good school systems, we have better doctors. We have better, you know, people coming into our, into our populations.
I know a lot of folks talk about the schools as being economic drivers, economic development drivers in their communities. We hear about that in their surrounding districts, not just Farmington as well.
Exactly. Oh, for sure.
You feel that way, too?
I do. I do. I feel like we need to just get as many people in here and concerned about it. So, we just need to keep chugging along, school board.
I'm speaking with Andrea Termon. She is running for Farmington School Board, District Four, in the city of Farmington. The upcoming election's in November. And again, we just have a couple of minutes remaining. And so, anything else you want to tell the voters about you and your stand on some of these, these issues?
I just, and again, I think that smaller class sizes are better. I think everybody would agree with that class ratios. And so, I know a lot of our schools are overpopulated. You know, we have a lot of, lot of children at Country Club, a lot at PV. My husband teaches at PV. He shares a classroom right now. So, a lot of people are telling me, oh, no, they're not overcrowded. We're fine. It's, my husband shares a classroom. How does that even work? So, it's just little interesting things that I think a lot of people don't know unless you are an educator, unless you are a parent, unless you are an administrator. And I feel like if I am on the school board, I will go and speak with the schools that I represent in District Four once a month. Make sure everything's going as they want it to go. And please let me know. You know, I want to be their voice. And yeah, you can look me up at voteandriatermon.com or Andrea Termon for School Board on Facebook.
On Facebook, you've got a page, okay? Right? Very good. And that's another way for folks to reach out. If they want to ask you a question, and I haven't asked you, they can do that directly through your Facebook or website.
And email me any ideas. Like I said, I don't know all the answers. I don't. I'm one person. The school board's made up of five. I don't believe they know all the answers. I think we need to get more people involved. More ideas are better ideas.
There you go. And if you don't vote, you can't really complain.
I agree.
Is what I say, right? District Four, the light green area on the map. Andrea Termon running for Farmington School Board in District Four. Thank you for coming in this morning.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Joining me this morning in our visual radio studio to talk about his campaign for the Farmington School Board in District Four, Kyle Rhodes is here. Good morning.
Good morning. Great to be here.
Thank you for coming back to talk with me about your campaign and running for reelection to the Farmington School Board. And tell me about, you've already served on the board for a while. Why are you running again?
So, I've served on the board for eight years.
Yep.
And so, what I want to kind of talk about is, is why we do this thing.
Okay.
What our accomplishments are, how we've done that, and what are some further challenges that we have.
All right. We have 10 minutes. I'm going to let you know.
I know. So, I'm going to just move.
Right.
So, why are we doing this thing? So, number one, for kids. We know that education drives better lives for kids, better lives for families. We're competing on a worldwide scale for talent. There's a plethora of people available out there at low skills work area. And, and there's, we've got to drive good education to get our kids in higher wage scale areas. And that's why we're trying to do these things in our school district. On the other thing, the other why is that we know our community is in a, is in a tight spot as far as economic development. We know that great educational systems drives economic development. So, we've got two things we're doing is the why. Develop kids, develop good economic development in our, our community. Now, let me talk about some of the things that we've done over the last four years or so.
Okay.
We're number one in the state in ELA. That's English Language Arts. We're ranked number one. San Juan College High School ranks number one in the state.
Which is managed by Farmington School District, as for folks who don't know.
Exactly. It's managed by Farmington School District. It's housed up here at San Juan College. So, it's a very unique cooperation between San Juan College and actually, all the area schools.
That's true. Students come from all the school districts.
Central Bloomfield, they all send their kids over here. So, it's, it's really unique. This is really important, knowing what happened in Aztec with the shooting and everything, is that, is that Farmington Municipal Schools ranks in the top 2% internationally by a company called Safe Havens, a consulting firm, Safe Havens International. Out of thousands of schools, we're ranked in the top 2% as far as safety systems, which I think is fantastic. Ladera Del Norte Elementary School was just named a Blue Ribbon School. We've actually raised our reading proficiencies 65% over the last four years, leading the state in that. And we've actually raised our math proficiencies 24% over the last four years. So, we're really doing a fantastic job of our number one goal, which is student achievement. And we're going to continue, we want to continue to do that, obviously, because that's our number one goal. Now, now, how have we done that? You're going to have to give me some prompts as far as time.
You're fine. So far, so good.
Okay. So, so, there's a reason why these things have happened. There's not a silver bullet. There's not something that just magically happens. And frankly, I'm a, I'm a student of Jim Collins, who wrote the books Good to Great, Great by Choice, How the Mighty Fall. And, and actually, we've, we started this journey at Pesco several years ago to follow this same model that he's put in, that he has identified from data that says, this is how you have an excellent organization. We're doing the same thing at the school district. So, number one, level five leadership. That means having great values-based leadership in the key positions throughout the district. We've got to have that. That sets the culture of the district. If we don't have that, we can't do anything else. So, the board has driven that. We are, we are working toward getting all the right police people in the right places across the breadth of the district. That means the superintendent, all the administration, principals, lead teachers, all of those people have to be the right people in the right places. Are we there? Pretty much. Not 100%. We're always working on that. That's what we've done at Pesco. That's what we've, that's why we've gone from a $40 million a year company to a $100 million a year company. That's why we've gone from 200 employees to 500 employees. These same principles that drive excellence in a organization. The other thing that's a big principle is you confront the brutal facts. And so, so that is, that is where we use data that drives decisions, that we're not just guessing. Or we, we have this unrealistic optimism for how things can be. But we actually use data to drive decisions, to drive instruction, to drive certain things, so that we're having high-quality equitable instruction in every single classroom. Now, what do I mean by equitable instruction in every classroom? I think that we've all experienced when we're raising our kids in, in the schools. So, I had five kids go through these schools. Actually, out of Pesco, I ran a little survey. We have 200 kids that are kids of the employees at Pesco that are in public schools.
Okay.
Tons of them in Farmington schools. But now, I'm trying to think of where I was going with that.
You're explaining one of the terms, I think, that you were, you were talking about not too long ago.
Oh, 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 yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so what we're trying to do is, what I mean by equitable is that we all experience where our child is going in the third grade, for example. And we're saying, well, who's the good, really good third grade teacher?
I want that for my kid.
Oh, yeah, exactly. And this is who that is. Well, we want that to be a non-decision because all the third grade teachers at Country Club Elementary, or Ladera, or at Apache, are great teachers. That's equitable instruction.
I see.
That's bringing everybody up to this level and not down to this level. And so, then, then the other thing that we're really working on is what Jim Collins calls the hedgehog, hedgehog concept, which sounds kind of weird.
Okay. I'm waiting.
But how that is, is done in a school district or an organization is you take the complex world and make it simple. And so, in the school situation, is we're putting in systems in every school that drives excellent instruction in every classroom. That means, I think there's been a lot of questioning about why we have early out on Mondays. That's so that the teachers in their PLCs, the professional learning communities, they're, they are collaborating on instruction, on best practices, on assessments, on data, and trying to drive good instruction in every classroom by that collaboration. That's what they're doing every Monday. That's what the hedgehog concept is all about.
I see. And they're doing it throughout the school year, right? So, that means that they can be improving, or checking things, or talking with each other throughout the school year, not just maybe mid-year and at the end, and then it's maybe too late to do anything about it.
It's constant. It never ends. You're constantly looking at data. And, and, and I don't think that people understand what assessments consist of. They think that that's just taking a standardized test.
Right.
But it's not. Assessments are, yeah, taking some of those tests, but it's also conversation between the teacher and the student, conversations between students and other students to check for understanding. I was unbelievably thrilled with the responses of some of our kids when the Secretary of Education came up to, to visit with the, the teacher over at Apache that was up for Teacher of the Year.
That's right.
And then, he went over to Ladera to congratulate them on their, their.
The Blue Ribbon School.
Blue Ribbon School. And so, Ryan Stewart, who's the Secretary of Education, was asking questions of these students. Now, one class was third graders, and the other was probably fourth or fifth graders at Ladera. And I was amazed at the depth of their responses. It wasn't a coming from rote memory, but it was truly from them understanding from, from depth what he was asking, how they were responding. That tells me that what we're, what we're doing with standard-based grading and things like that, where we're teaching knowledge and not just memory, is, is powerful. And it's having an effect in those classrooms, which just totally thrilled me, what we're doing with that.
We have about a minute left. Kyle Rhodes. Kyle Rhodes is talking to me. He's running for San, excuse me, pardon me, Farmington School Board, District Four. And so, what do you want folks to know about Kyle Rhodes?
Well, so, I really want to stay on the board. And, and here's a reason why. It's is we've made a lot of progress over the last eight years. I want that to keep going. We have things going on that continually need to happen. We need to continue with this systems approach. You know, we've got a fairly inexperienced board with Robin Hoffman, she'll be on six years, Keith Corley, two years, Stephanie Thompson is, just started, really, two months ago, then we'll have a new one. And I think, frankly, I think my leadership and my experience, both on the board and at Pesco, are invaluable. So, I really, I really want to stay on the board to drive these continued improvements.
If folks want more information, or want to reach out and talk to you more, Kyle Rhodes, about some of these things you're talking about, do you have a Facebook page? Or how can they reach out and find you?
I have a Facebook page. I have a website. I've got my email address on the school board website. So, all that's out there. They just need to reach out and talk to me.
Lots of ways to do that.
Absolutely.
Kyle Rhodes, he's running for Farmington School Board in District Four. We're showing the map right now. It's kind of the light green area on the map. I would say maybe north and east side of Farmington, although there is a little smidgen that runs south of Main Street, too.
Yep.
In your district. But that's, that's what we're talking about. Thanks for coming in this morning.
Thanks, Scott. Appreciate it.
You're very welcome. That's Kyle Rhodes, my guest here on KSJE. Joining me here in our visual radio studio to talk about her campaign for the Farmington School Board in District Five, Joan Valet is here to talk a little bit about her campaign. Ms. Valet, good morning. Thank you for coming in.
Good morning. How are you?
I am well, thank you. You are running in District Five, and we just showed the map a few moments ago, which is kind of the, up and down the La Plata Highway. To look at the map, the purple area on the screen, and a little bit of Farmington, the city limits between Pinion Hills and, and 30th Street, roughly.
Right.
Is the size of the, the district that you're representing. So, talk to us a little bit maybe about your background and why you decided to run for the school board.
My background. Um, I have taught in many schools around here, basically, all the schools around here. And I've taught for the BIE, the Bureau of Indian Education.
Right. What did you teach? Was it just a general?
I always teach special education.
Okay.
I'm also an adjunct faculty here at San Juan College since 1996. I'm originally from Wisconsin, from the Milwaukee area. I went to the University of Wisconsin in Milwaukee and got a degree, an original degree in art history and anthropology, then went back for psychology. Then I got married and I moved here. And I worked up in Toyac as the social services director for a while. And I've worked for the state. I've, and then I got my teaching certificate in, originally in secondary education, in social services, art, psychology, and then English. I, let's see.
A lot of education-related jobs that you've had, is what I hear.
A lot of, very, very many. And I worked in Milwaukee for social services. And I was what was called an institutions liaison. So, the children I dealt with were in institutions. They either had psychological problems, or they were naughty and had to go because of the courts.
Sure.
So, I've had a lot of experience with children, or actually, people from little biddies, little preschool, and up until people in old age. So, I know a lot about people.
Right. And with that background, you are now running for the Farmington School Board. And so.
Yes.
What do you hope you can bring to the school board and the management of Farmington Schools?
What I feel I can bring is a background in education, psychology, people, social services, things like that. Plus, I came from an excellent university that really taught you to be experienced and also disciplined in your education. And I feel our, our children around here need that. Also, I talk a lot. I talk to people. I try to find out what they want. Because as someone's representative, I feel that I'm obliged to do what my, the people I represent want. At least if it's ethical and sound.
Sure, of course.
So.
Is there anything that's going on at Farmington Schools that you are concerned about, or that you'd like to change? Or are things going along pretty well, in your opinion? Or what, what is your feelings about Farmington Municipal Schools at this point?
I think it can change a lot for the betterment of the community and all the students. One of the things I would change, because I was a special ed teacher, and when, once, one of my students' parents did not have the money to pay for the supplies for the beginning of school, like tissue and Clorox wipes and all other things. And he couldn't get a locker because of that. And I feel that that's, a locker is something I pay for in my taxes for the children. And he should have gotten it. So, I think that the school district should be paying for those things, not the parents, especially when parents can hardly pay for food. And they're obliged to do this so that their child can get an education. I don't think that's fair.
Sure.
I also think that we really need to start looking at the education of our teachers. As someone who has taught future teachers, what I've found is that a lot of them don't always have the education they need in order to be good teachers. A lot of them do, but some don't. And I've had people in those groups who plagiarize material. And when that happens, I go, what are they going to teach future students? Because that's unethical, and it's against the law.
Right, right.
So, I'd like to see that. I'd also like to see art every day, or as much as possible in the schools. Because if teachers, if children learn art, they do better in everything, math, science, English, geography, all of those things. And what I've experienced is that that is not something that's going on. Which is sad, because I remember having art in school. And then, as I was a child, the teacher would say, okay, you are now going to create a, a human skeleton. Making the skeleton was part of art, but it was science. And I know when I've taught art for elementary teachers, the teachers, or future teachers, have to put together a whole array of lessons using art and the other subjects in order of things like kindergarten, first grade, second grade. And even today, with some of those people, 20 years later, 25 years later, almost, my first students come up to me, and they'll say, Joan, I use that every day since I got my teaching job, which says that it's a very good way for teachers to learn how to help students learn. Also, I think they should have music.
Art and music. Right.
Yes.
Okay.
It's all art.
Right.
So, and I think they should also learn more social studies.
Okay. All right. Let me ask you a little bit about politics, because this is your first run for public office?
Yes.
Okay. How, how's it going so far? Okay. How, how's it going so far?
Interesting.
Okay.
Interesting.
As you meet then voters in the district, are they giving you any messages? Are they telling you certain things that they're concerned about with the schools or happy about with the schools?
Um, some of them are very happy with the new superintendent. Um, some would like, especially people whose children never get into sports. They'd like to see it so that all children play sports, not just children who constantly get into sports. So if you have a child in football, sometimes you'll see that child in basketball and then the spring sports. Always the same children. They want it so that maybe the football players don't get into basketball. They also, in many cases, resent that so much money is spent on sports.
I see.
And not, if your child is in special ed, special ed students aren't always getting what they need in order to learn. And those children, um, a lot of money is given to the schools to educate those children. So they would like to see more of that.
Okay. Very interesting. We are almost out of time. Joan Valet, who is running for Farmington School Board in District Five. Um, if folks would like to reach out and ask you some questions that I haven't had time to ask you this morning, how can they, how can they do that? How can they reach you?
Um, they could, I've changed my mind.
Okay.
They could email me.
All right. Sure.
At valetjoe@Yahoo.com.
Okay. And that's two L's and two E's in Valet, you told me. And I remember that to get the name correctly. So I'll have you repeat that address one more time for us, right? There you go, everyone. Joan Valet, thank you for joining me this morning.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it very, very much. That is Joan Valet. She is running for Farmington School Board in District Five. That is the purple area on the map that we are showing you right now. My guest here on KSJE. And thank you to all the candidates who have joined us this morning on KSJE for the Farmington Municipal School Board. Again, District Four, Kyle Rhodes and Andrea Turman. And District Five, Joan Valet. Rick Covetto also running in District Five, but he, um, did not show up for his scheduled interview time with us last week. So he was not available this morning. Did you enjoy that podcast? We hope that you did. And if you did, share it with your friends. And if you really want to keep podcasts like this coming, please support KSJE. You can do it easily online at ksj.com.